That one says about a minute and a half after supper. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees, Weatherford College. Today's Thursday, February 10, 2022. It's about 2:00 p.m. We're in the Alleyne Strain Community Room of the DOS Student Center located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, to consider and act on the posted agenda. And so we do have a quorum. So call the meeting to order, and I will give the invocation today. You'll bow your heads. Holy God, help this board understand its role, the purposes for our meeting, to make us effective as trustees for Weatherford College. Clear our minds, help us listen, help us hear, help us understand and choose the best way and solutions forward as we do our work here today. We thank you for those who work in the many jobs that make it possible for Weatherford College to fulfill its purposes. We're so thankful for the students and others that have, not only have attended but attend this school now and in an attempt to better themselves and their families and our society. Guide us in all that we do, keep us safe and productive. Amen.
Amen.
Let's stand, and I'll lead us also in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Ms. Worley, is there anyone on the public comment today?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Worley has been, is moving into another area today. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Three, President's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions, employee notices, and an enrollment update. Recognizations: Two former Weatherford College rodeo athletes recently won world championships at the Wrangler National Finals Rodeo in Las Vegas. Jordan Peterson-Briggs won the barrel racing title, and Sawyer Gilbert won the breakaway roping title. They are the first W C alumni to win world pro rodeo championships. Go Coyotes! The JBB poll recently ranked W C Coyote baseball as fourth in the nation in a preseason poll. Last year, we sent two coyotes to Major League Baseball, and we are looking forward to another great season this year. Our workforce team has been diligently working to secure additional grant funding. I am proud to share that they have collaboratively been awarded true grants and jet grants that will help launch drone technology, certified EKG technician, heavy equipment operator, patient care technician, and sterile process and distribution technician programs. These external funds are allowing us to expand our students' educational opportunities at an unprecedented pace. Employee notices: DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Lydia Rogers, an information technology specialist, has retired effective 2/28/22, and Rolinda Stone, our Executive Director of Human Resources, has retired effective 3/31/22. Congratulations, Rolinda. We thank Lydia and Rolinda for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Enrollment update: Spring 2022 system-wide enrollment is up by 1% year-to-date. The enrollment report as of count date was 4,908 compared to 4,856 last year. Our beautiful Wise County campus saw a 16% year-to-date enrollment increase with a spring enrollment of 381 students. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. Ms. Stone, I'm so sorry to lose you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm enjoying my time here.
Well, thank you for what you've done.
Amen.
Amen, yes. We'll move to the Consent Agenda. Financial reports, we have A through H there of the items and reports that are there. And are there any comments or questions about any of those items? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I see one.
Second on that?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sounds unanimous to me. We'll move to Number Five, Consideration, Possible Action, Resolution for Utilization of Court of Property. Mr. Curley?
We're not going to approach that today. Thank you.
Mr. Curley, I appreciate all the work you've done on that, and I, I think, and just so everybody will know, that, that issue is ongoing. Mr. Curley has worked extremely hard on that, and there are a few things that are, are being considered there, and so I, I do agree that it's a wise thing to move that, and hopefully we can get that on the, the next agenda. But I, I want to just make sure everybody understands how much I appreciate Mr. Curley's work and what he does and how he does it. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We'll move to, are there any questions or comments on that item before we move on?
I second that.
Thank you. We'll move to Number Six, Reports. President Farmer, Academic, Student Services, B and C also as posted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have an Academic and Student Services update provided by Mr. Endy. He is available. That's been provided in advance in writing, should you have any questions for follow-up there. As well as Item B, our proposed tuition and fees, prepared by Dr. Cantrell and her team. And we do want to give a verbal report today from Dr. Philip Matthew over our organizational leadership program. It's our new bachelor's degree in organizational leadership. We are very proud of Dr. Philip Matthew. He is a true scholar, recently published another book, and we were very fortunate to steal him from a well-established program in Washington State. He's done a tremendous job since his arrival here at Weatherford College and is in the process of securing several articulation agreements with major universities across the state that will not only dramatically extend our students' educational opportunities at the graduate level, but in some cases will waive a lot of the financial costs associated with the graduate education. So, Dr. Matthew, thank you for joining us today, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, President Farmer, and the Board of Trustees, for this opportunity to provide an update on the launch of the bachelor's program in organizational leadership. I want to share with you some plans for program development as well. As you know, our VAS program launched in fall 2021, thanks to your approval. Several processes had to be in place prior to beginning our first cohort, including creating an advising system, developing the admissions process, developing and approving the curriculum, including syllabi, course content, canvas shelves, the class schedule, program promotion, and then receiving accreditation. This was a team effort across campus, thanks to Student Services, President Farmer, Vice President Endy, our deans, Dr. Ebat, and especially my dean, Dean Cruz. With that firm foundation in place, we had a strong first cohort who began the program in fall 2021. We successfully completed that semester, and all 15 students who completed the first semester returned for spring 2022. Without a doubt, these are some of the best students I've had a chance to work with. They're smart, and they're enthusiastic, and they're team-oriented. We've had guest speakers, including a nationally recognized leadership ethics professor from the University of Richmond, and we have great guests lined up for this semester as well. We had a student receive a promotion, and this week, a student reported she was hired for a new position. So we continue program development, and we're going to be offering a series of free leadership development workshops for the campus and the community very soon. Applications for Cohort Two will open in the next few weeks, and we're having information sessions on Zoom, in-person, and at Wise County on March 9. And the last thing I want to share, I'm really happy to share, as Dr. Farmer said, we are now establishing graduate-level articulations with Texas A&amp;M Commerce and Charleston State University. This partnership will provide qualified graduates, specifically from our VAS program, a direct pathway into master's programs at these institutions. So I'm grateful for their partnership, for their administration, and we hope to finalize these shortly. So to conclude, what I envision for this program, for our students, is a future without limits, and I'm grateful to the Board for approving this program and continuing to support it. Thank you.
Your hair.
Before you sit down, any, any questions or comments for Dr. Matthew? Well, we were, go ahead.
If you haven't read his book, I'm doing it chapter by chapter. I just finished the chapter on persuasion, which you better watch out. It is just, well, I was married to Bill Cody for a good long while, too. Thank you, sir. We're really glad your program is here.
Very nice to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I would like to comment, Mr. Chair, that we, we frequently hear the saying, gentleman and a scholar. I will tell you that Dr. Philip Matthew truly is both a gentleman and a scholar, and we're very enriched by your presence. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Farmer?
No, sir.
Moving to Agenda Item Number Seven, Future Agenda Items or Meetings, President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next month, we will be bringing to you for your consideration the adoption of the 2022-2023 tuition and fee schedule, as well as the annual evaluation and employment contract of the college president.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Any questions or comments by any of the Board? Moving on, we'll go to Agenda Item Number Eight, Announcements. Ms. Worley?
Yes. Tonight in the ALCEC, we have the W C Jazz Orchestra sextet at 7:30. Our tennis team is also playing a match right now at the Ninth Grade Center. And then tomorrow, it's not on here, but the Jack Harvey Awards has been rescheduled from last week due to the weather, so that will be tomorrow down at the DOS Heritage and Culture Center. We have quite a few upcoming home games for basketball and softball that we'd like to see you at. March 3, we have a songwriter showcase in the ALCEC, followed the next day by a violin and piano recital. And then, March 14 through the 18th, we'll all have a much-needed and well-earned break for spring break.
Anything else, Ms. Worley?
That is all.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, just to point that Ms. Worley is not aware of, that tennis tournament has been canceled, just as an FYI today.
Thank you, ma'am.
I apologize.
No, you had no way of knowing that. Not your fault.
What was the date on the violin and piano?
The piano concert is on March 4.
Oh, yeah.
And where?
That'll be in the ALCEC.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Ms. Worley. All right, next item on the agenda is closed session. We're going to adjourn the open session at this point, and in about two or three minutes, we will open our closed session and have the item agendas, items on the agenda that are listed under Number Nine. Thank you very much.
It's a great meeting.
About fifteen minutes until three o'clock. So we're, uh, we've had our closed session. We're going to resume the open session at this time. So I'll call that to order. And we'll move to agenda item number ten, consideration possible action of real property. And there are no action items needed there. So we'll now move to number eleven, consideration possible action of number eleven. And there's no action needed as to number eleven and what that consideration, those considerations involve. Moving to number twelve, consideration possible action completed board of trustees self-assessment. And I'll make a motion to, uh, that we email the assessment form, board of trustees assessment form to all the board members and do that, uh, as soon as possible in the next day or so, hopefully by, you know, later than tomorrow. And ask that that information in there reminds the board members to get that back in within about, well, no later than the next, uh, seven days after that because we want to be able to use that information and compile the data and then, uh, put that on, uh, one of the next, uh, agendas for the board of trustees meeting. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Sounds unanimous to me. So that passes. So that brings us to, uh, agenda item number thirteen, adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.[1783.65][1783.65](applause)[1784.65]